Twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry. Kind of got turned around a little bit. So first, I would like to have for the invocation, Amin Adul Haseen. Thank you so much, and if you could do the prayer for us, because everybody could stand, and after the pledge of allegiance, we'd like to hear more about your church.
To the Fayetteville City Council, Mayor, let us pray. Our Creator, the merciful benefactor, the merciful redeemer, who opens for all people a way to have good conscience and a good life. Bless the efforts of the mayor and council, and all other efforts in progress for more opportunity, for more of us. Open their hearts to human compassion, tolerance, cooperation, determined perseverance for justice and for what is right. We pray you protect this governing body from partial vision and argumentative mindset, from arrogance, racism, narrow-mindedness, mean spirit, and negative politics. We implore the Creator to bless, guide, inspire, and motivate the council and mayor to hold and not let go the rope of right-minded thinking, strong ethics, inclusive vision for business, culture, and social justice, to strive for a prosperous Fayetteville, taking pride in human decency and diversity. Give this governing body the keys needed to open their mind and their vision, to see in their reality in order to make progress smoothly for all families, neighborhoods, and communities of Fayetteville. Remember, your position of leadership is not from you, but it is from the Creator, and is a test to your compliance to who gave you the gift of life. We pray the Creator, Almighty God, bless, guide, protect, and make you successful, and bless you with the most excellent outcomes in your duties, obligations, and responsibilities in your service to all the people of Fayetteville. With God's name, amen. United States, to the Father, who is one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty just as well.
Sir, would you like to give, tell us a little bit about your mosque and your involvement in the community? Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I am a member of Masjid Omar Ibn Said on twenty-seven hundred Merkison Road. We are in the month of Ramadan, the month that the Quran, which is a book believed to be revealed to Muhammad the Prophet from Almighty God, Allah, that we believe is the Creator, the Maintainer, the Sustainer of the heavens and the earth, and the Holy Quran is his book of guidance for all humanity and Islam, which means peace and submission to the will of God and Muslim who submits to Allah's will, and we invite you to attend and visit Masjid Omar Ibn Said.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we would like to invite Ms. Malley Monroe up to the podium so she can present some very special guests from us, from the Cumberland County Hometown Bronco Pageant. I love when my two worlds collide.
Good evening. I would like to present to you what we call our pride and joy of the Cumberland County Chapter. Each year we sponsor scholarship, not, excuse me, a pageant to raise money for two scholarships that the Cumberland County Chapter have developed. Okay? This year, we had six contestants, and they are in two groups. One called the preteen, and they are in ages from nine through twelve, and then we have the little miss. They are from five to eight. I would like to present the ones that were able to come to you as I call their name. Will you please come forward? Our preteen queen, Ms. Kennedy Marie Whitaker. She will serve from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, and if she decides that she wants to run again, she can run until she gets twelve. So hopefully, we'll see her again as our queen next year. If not, she will represent us from now on when we have special events. We bring back some of the former queens to represent the chapter, and again, I congratulate her. Let me see if any others are there.
Her name.
Who's? Oh, her name? Turn them, okay. Her name?
My name is Kennedy Marie Whitaker.
Okay, again, congratulations to you from the chapter, and we are honored to have you serve as our queen this year. The other ones that are not present, we'd just like to call their names. Our, we had a little miss, pre, little miss FSU, hometown Bronco. Her name was Madison McLaughlin. She's not here. And then the court consists of four others, preteen Coley Jones, Sonia Ross, and Olivia Addley. Again, thank you for allowing us to present to you our queen in court.
Ms. Monroe, if you would like, the council can stand up, and she can stand in the front if you would like a picture with all of us.
Okay, that was not.
A beauty queen always wants a picture with everyone.
Absolutely, everyone.
Yes.
Please get my good side.
Thank you so much. So next, I would like for, we are going to go for our tradition in March. I would ask that all the ladies on the diocese meet me down at the front, and all staff that are women to please come meet me down at the podium. And chief, that includes you too. All right, ladies, this is our month. We have tradition. That's it, come on. We are proud. So look at all these women that are helping move our city, run for, move forward, and I can guarantee you, thirty years ago, it did not look like this, and they were not in the positions that they were in. So on behalf of the ladies on the council, we would like to thank you for all that you are doing for our city. So in recognition of National Women's Month, March, as we have done, I think, council member Banks McLachlan, I think maybe the past four years, about four or five years, I'm going to read the proclamation about our, our month. March is National Women's History Month, March eighth, I'm sorry, March is National Women's History Month, March eighth, twenty twenty-four is International Women's Day, and whereas women have played and continue to play a critical economical, cultural, social roles in every aspect of life, women have played a unique role throughout history by providing a majority of volunteer labor force, and particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in the United States. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have served our country courageously in the military and made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our city in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, served in, served as early leaders at the forefront, forefront of many major progressive social, social change movements, and whereas women make up the majority of American essential workers and work tirelessly to keep families and our communities and our country afloat. Despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked, undervalued, and in literature, teaching, and the study of American history. The mission of Her Fayetteville is to celebrate, empower, and develop women through education, networking, mentoring, and partnerships to promote opportunities for all women throughout Fayetteville, and will focus on heart, equal, equality, and resilience, celebrating International Women's Day and Women's History Month. Now, I therefore, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council and more than over two hundred and eight citizens, do at this moment honorably proclaim the month of March in the year twenty twenty-four, and the week of March twenty-second, March second through March eighth, Her Fayetteville. I call upon residents of Fayetteville to observe March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, activities, and to support Fayetteville movement and her week celebrations and all the celebrations for women in the city of Fayetteville. In witness thereof, I do put my hand on the cause great seal the city of Fayetteville affixes third day of March. Mayor Mitch Colvin. Thank you, ladies.
Behind the podium?
Yeah, behind the podium. Nobody's going anywhere. All right, I need, just go in there a little bit. All right. Look this way. Get a little closer. All right, look this way, please. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. They're right there.
So we will wait, and we will ask that the Royal Court Delta Carolina Kings come up. Beta Phi Military Fraternity. They show up too, aren't they? And council member Banks McLachlan is going to read the proclamation. Y'all can come up around if you want. Come on over here with me.
Whereas Royal Court Delta of Mu Beta Phi Military Fraternity Incorporated was chartered in the city of Columbia, South Carolina. The Royal Court named its chapter Carolina Kings because of the area in which the chartering member lived at the date of its charter. The Kings of Royal Court Delta reside in various cities around North and South Carolina. And whereas Mu Beta Phi Military Fraternity Incorporated was founded March twenty-second, twenty seventeen by three active-duty and retired military men across three branches of service, and whereas their aspiration to serve, support, and defend the men and women in the local veteran communities amplified their passion to give back. In those aspirations, Mu Beta Phi was created, and whereas built off of the principles of mission, brotherhood, and professionalism. The Brothers of Mu Beta Phi have taken a sworn oath to strengthen the veteran community, restore faith in the community, and broaden knowledge of our veterans. And whereas the Brothers of Mu Beta Phi are leaders in the local and veteran communities, they strive to develop community through education, advocacy, mentorship, motivation, and most importantly, development of the youth and defense of our veterans. Standing with dedicated men and organizations to fulfill this goal, Mu Beta Phi provide a safe haven to develop brotherhood, friendship, community, involvement, and change forth the greater good. Now therefore, I Mitch Mayor Colvin, the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city, the city council of more than two hundred and eight citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim the twenty-second of March in the year of twenty twenty-four to be honor of the Royal Court Delta of Mu Beta Phi Military Fraternity Founder's Day, and witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause a great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed on the twelfth of February, twenty twenty-four. Mitch Colvin.
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much for that. And I really, we, we as Mu Beta Phi, we all do appreciate the opportunity to come and be recognized for this event, and in return, we have something we'd like to present to you as well, if you don't mind. We have here what we call in the court, the Nemean Lion Award, and the Nemean Lion Award is a certification of excellence issue for maintaining and consistently in high standards of workmanship and sanctioned by duly authorized officers proudly present to Mayor Mitch Colvin, great appreciation due to your extraordinary dedication and recognition of your continued excellence and extraordinary service to Royal Court Delta. We also have the same for the city of Fayetteville. They could be also posted wherever you, wherever you would like.
I feel like I'm at the Oscars. I would like to take this award from Mayor Mitch Colvin. He thanks you very much.
I have one more. This actually goes to one of our members. If it wasn't for this member here, we wouldn't be here today. Mr. Eric Young, would you please come forward, sir? This is the Nemean Lion, Lion Award presented to a member who made it all possible for us to be here today, and I would thank you for your service, sir.
Want to get a picture, and then we'll get one with the whole council?
Yes.
I'm going to put the city awards first. We'll do one of those. Yes, let's all get together, and then we'll go to. You want to go to, and we'll get the whole council?
Yes.
Yeah, let's do it.
One second. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Perfect.
All right, we have great things going on. Okay, I'm going to turn to council member Banks McLachlan again. We are here to celebrate Transit Driver Day and Appreciation Day. If I could have everyone from transit up here? We thoroughly appreciate everything you do for our city, and we all see you going back and forth every day.
You see, I'm leading them, right?
You, uh-huh. We'll allow that for the month of March, maybe, just this one time, right, ladies? Council member Banks McLachlan.
Whereas on Monday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, public transit systems across the country will observe Transit Driver Appreciation Day to recognize the transit drivers for their skill, hard work, customer service, and dedication to improving the quality of life in communities they serve. And whereas the day raises awareness for frontline transit, transit employees who safely move our community forward by connecting people to jobs, educational institutions, medical facility, leisure activities, and Fort Liberty. And whereas the city of Fayetteville would like to acknowledge the commitment and dedication shown by transit drivers who are required to multitask to maintain a schedule, check fares, give direction, announce stops, and courteously greet the transit customers we serve, all while safely maneuvering an extra-large vehicle through unpredictable traffic, adverse weather conditions, and adverse weather conditions, and tight spaces. And whereas it is also recognized that other transit employees support the transit drivers with vehicle maintenance, customer information, dispatching, and other assistance behind the scenes to ensure service is provided every day. Now therefore, I Mitch Colvin, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the 18th day of March 2024 to be Transit Driver Appreciation Day, and urge all business, employers, and educational institutions within Fayetteville and Cumberland County to actively participate in providing opportunities for reentering individuals to rebuild their lives. And witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the great seal of the city Fayetteville to be affixed on this day, March 2024.
You about to say something?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin serves as the liaison for the FAST.
Good evening, the mayor in his absence and city councillors. My name is James Elliott, and I'm a transit operator for the city of Fayetteville. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I was born and raised in Fayetteville, North Carolina, and I married to a lovely lady who was at a baseball game right now with my granddaughter, who is an educator at the North Carolina A&amp;T State University. And at times, she'd think I'm her student, and I knew every man up here understands that part. I've been employed at the city of Fayetteville for eight years, although I was supposed to retire three years ago. I stayed because I wanted to be a part of the fast transition from need to choice. The arrivals of the new bus, the new color scheme, and the branding has been awesome. Now we look like a large metropolitan city and a small town. And we're proud to drive the new fleet. We're also excited about the new electric buses that's arriving next year, although I might not be around to fully enjoy them, but I'm sure my other fellow operators will. We have leaders who's always looking for ways to improve transit and the operation. We have a strong director, Transit Director Ms. Tiffany Neal, who works hard and always there for us. Leaders who have an open door policy and give us a platform to voice our concern. I should know because I'm in their ear all the time. Let me give you an example. Ms. Neal heard our concern regarding driving the cutaway vehicles on the busy streets and the lack of driver options on the older buses. The recent replacement of the 30-foot of buses was a huge success. Have you guys seen those 30-footers? They're really nice. Also, cup holders, window shades, tent were installed in the older buses. This small change immediately boosted our morale. We're more involved in operator scheduling, hiring events, and advertisement than ever before. I tell employees all the time, FAST might not be the best place to work, but it's a great place to work. I've enjoyed my tenure here, and I plan to retire. Well, I said this year, but they said next year. Lastly, on behalf of the entire transit team, thank you, Mayor, City Council, for this opportunity and your appreciation for me and my fellow transit operators as we celebrate Transit Driver Appreciation Day. Thank you.
So I challenge everyone, if you've never ridden the bus, to go ride the bus. I did it one day, and it will open your eyes up to see that we are a growing city and we do have a great transit system. All right, next off, we have, we're going to ask Mr. Phil Harris to come up. The Executive Director of American Red Cross. It's American Red Cross Month. And we are going to have Councilmember Hare.
Yes, and just before I read that, Phil Harris and I are very good friends. He's a good pickleball guy, and because of him, I have given more blood than I ever have ever given in my life since I've met and built a relationship with Phil. So Phil, you got another paint coming very, very soon. On behalf of the Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas during Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in the Fayetteville community and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. Whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community, and it advances the humanitarian legacy of the Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who notable dedication dedicated herself to alleviating and suffering, and today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplifies Barton's commitment as they step up through the American Red Cross Sandhills Chapter to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, or providing a critical blood donation for hospital patients, supporting our military families and veterans and caregivers through the unique challenges of service of saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. And whereas, we hereby recognize the month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join us in this commitment to strengthen our community. And therefore, I DJ Hare, standing in for Mayor Mitch Colvin, the mayor of the city of Fayetteville, and on behalf of the city council and our 208,000 residents, do hereby honorably proclaim the month of March in the year of 2024, American Red Cross Month. Here witness thereof, I here under set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed on this 29th day of January of 2024, and that is signed by our mayor. Let's give him and them an applause. And as Phil, as you come to turn around, I'm going to tell you something, tell the audience something that maybe others might want to be able to support. Many, many, many years ago, we had some disastrous floods, and I was away at that time living in Delaware, and it flooded my home on Washington Drive. It flooded it terribly, and I was just so honored, didn't know a whole lot about it, that the Red Cross came in, moved my grandmother, moved my mom, helped them get into a temporary setting. From there, I turned and became a monthly investor in the Red Cross, and I applaud you and your organization for that, and I still thank you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the recognition. I just want to say thank you. We have been in Fayetteville since 1917, and the Red Cross is led by volunteers, and I have a volunteer board and my disaster team with me today, so they're supporting us in our community. But we touch a lot of people in a different way each and every day in our community. Most people see me in the grocery store with a red shirt, and they say, well, you're the blood guy. Yep, I'm the blood guy. We provide 40% of the country's blood, and the city of Fayetteville and our community have really stepped up during COVID. And as you mentioned, Councilmember Hare, sickle cell awareness, the 100 Black Men really led forward on that. And so, we're out on campus at Fayetteville Tech, Fayetteville State, Methodist University, talking about our sickle cell initiative, so thank you for that. We have also people that they, I took CPR, I was a lifeguard, I learned to swim, we still do that to this day. But we know people learn in different ways, so you need to download your free app, you know, emergency app, and then we also have first aid or even pet first aid. So the other thing is we have our hands-only CPR. We know that people will be saved by a bystander, so we're teaching that free course in the community and really putting a big push in March. The other way people notice are our serviced armed forces. We have two offices on Fort Liberty, so we give you the good news, the birth of a baby, or the bad news, the death of a loved one, and get that service member home. But really, people know us for disaster, and we have had Matthew in Florence, but our biggest disaster in our area is a single-family home fire. We had 238 families in Cumberland County experienced that. We also know that we've had some fatalities, and we know smoke alarms save lives. So for example, we have our Sound the Alarm program. This Saturday, we're going to work with city of Fayetteville Fire Department, Station 12, we're going to install free smoke alarms because we know they save lives. So we want to make sure our community is prepared, whether it's blood, life-saving classes, or disaster relief. So we couldn't do it without volunteers, so we're recognizing them in the month of March, and we appreciate you guys' support as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Quick question, Mr. Harris. First, thank you for all that you're doing for our community, but for the viewing audience and those who are listening, tuning in, if anybody was interested in volunteering or donating blood, what's the contact information?
Easiest way is redcross.org. Same way with volunteering, we'll value your time and your talents and reach out to you and see what you can share with us. Same way, if you want to find a blood drive, you can go to redcross.org, put in your zip code, or download your free app and find a blood drive near you. So redcross.org or 1-800-RED-CROSS. We have an office out on, off Bragg Boulevard on Carroll Street, but we'll make it easy for you to help us out because we're all helping our neighbors.
Thank you for sharing that information.
Great, thanks.
Here's yours, right here. Thank you, Mr. Harris. And for those of y'all, just fun fact, Mr. Harris and I went over the edge last year together, and we went to a practice, and United Way is doing that, so please support them if you've had people that are trying to do that. But we went to practice and said, we don't know if we can do this, and then when we got there, it was easier to go off the edge of the building than it was at practice, definitely. So again, thank you. All right, we are going to go to the city manager's report. Oh, I'm sorry, announcements and recognitions, let's go to announcements. I have Councilmember Hare and then Councilmember Honduras. Councilmember Hare?
Yes, I was trying to find the flyer, but I know it so well. During this time of the year, we still have people that are in need of food items, and we haven't passed that. And on tomorrow, at Kingdom Impact Global Ministries, 2503 Marcusson Road, they will have their food drive, and it's going to begin at nine o'clock. So we have always, as you see these type of events, services provided across the city, you need to get there early. And food will be distributed to the cars, you don't have to get out, beginning at nine o'clock until all of the food is gone, and that is the 15th, right? March the 15th, that's tomorrow, beginning at nine o'clock at Kingdom Impact Global Ministries Church, 2503 Marcusson Road. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare. Councilmember Honduras?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have an announcement from our hometown utility, PWC. Next Friday, March 22nd, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. here in downtown Fayetteville, Skyview at 121 Hay Street, free admission to all. Stop by and discover the ways to save. Is PWC's Power and Water Conservation Expo? Don't miss this event. PWC will give you the power to save lots on your utility bills with experts on hand, demos, and useful giveaways and more to help you conserve. So everybody, check it out. That's next Friday, the 22nd, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Skyview on Hay, 121 Hay Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Honduras. Do I have any other announcements? All right, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. No formal announcements tonight, but just to remind citizens that if you would like to learn about what's happening in the city of Fayetteville or keep up with current events, if you would subscribe to our newsletter, which goes out every Friday. To do so, you can go to the city of Fayetteville's webpage, and that information is loaded at the top of the page for your convenience. But that's all. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, city manager. Before we go to the approval of the agenda, I'm going to go to Councilmember McNair.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Jensen, I would like to pull item 7.03 and make it item 10.02.
Okay, can I get a second? All right, I got a second from Councilmember Davis. All those in favor? Any discussion, sorry. All those in favor, please vote. All right, that is unanimous with those present. All right, we are going to go to 7.0, the consent agenda, city attorney. 6.0, the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? I have Councilmember Davis, seconded by Councilmember Honduras. Any discussion? All right, I ask for your vote. I'm waiting on, okay, there we go. That is 9-2-0. That is unanimous with those present. Now we are going to 7.0, the consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the consent? Councilmember Davis, can I get a second? Councilmember McNair, any discussion? All right, I ask for your vote. That is unanimous with all those present, for those present. All right, 8.0 is staff reports, sustainability plan, project kickoff, 8.01. Hello, Mr. Redding?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. So I'm Brooke Redding, special project manager from city manager's office, and I'm excited to bring this forward tonight and introduce our consultant group that's going to assist city staff in executing this project to develop the city's sustainability plan. As you know, it's been about 15 years since we've had an active plan, and so I'll bring up Rich Swanson and his team to go ahead and pitch off the kickoff meeting or the kickoff brief to y'all of what the next year is going to kind of look like. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Brooke. Good evening, Mayor Protem and city councillors. It's an honor to be here, and we really appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight a kickoff for the Fayetteville Sustainability Plan. This will be approximately a year-long engagement, and we're going to outline for you tonight what that sustainability plan should deliver. First, let me introduce my colleague, Anna Bugankova. She and I will be sort of co-presenting here over the next couple of minutes, and we are from Blue Strike, an environmental consultancy. We have offices sort of on the West Coast, and I am what I like to say, up the road in Boston, so not too far away. But it's really a pleasure to be with you here, and we've appreciated the great hospitality of the city of Fayetteville thus far. So you may ask, what is a sustainability action? So you may ask, what is a sustainability action plan? And I want to talk about that at quite a high level here. Basically, a sustainability plan is a strategy to achieve environmental, financial, and societal objectives of the city. We really start first with trying to determine from you all and from the community, what are those objectives? What are the desired sort of outcomes and values reflected for Fayetteville in, so far as it represents or intersects with sustainability? And then we back up and determine, okay, what are the strategies then to achieve those objectives? The sustainability plan should provide superior quality of life for all residents and businesses. It should also reduce the impact of the city's operations on natural resources and on the environment. And so the plan should deliver the following things at minimum: a community-wide sustainability framework, GHG inventory, including baselines and forecasts, decarbonization and other resiliency for the community endeavors for key sectors, and then an implementation plan that includes funding sources, resource requirements, timelines, and milestones. So the plan should be very actionable, and the programs and projects that we have that are outcomes of the plan will be very clear-cut, will be able to dedicate a start time and an end time with a budget value and some benefits associated with those initiatives, and when they're finished, you'll be able to check those off. So we'll have a very actionable plan at the end. We talk a little bit about our sustainability plan in terms of frameworks, and what we mean by frameworks are essentially the areas that we will pursue, broad-stroke areas that represent the different sectors of Fayetteville operations from a government standpoint, and sort of community life and business transactions writ large. The framework should foster sustainability in business and residential sectors through sustainability practices. Any decarbonization efforts that are surfaced should identify, rank, and evaluate those endeavors as benefits. We will recommend programs and policies for community resilience and sustainable development. We will have a financial operating structure that prioritizes and supports sustainable projects and that integrates sustainability into procurement measures. And then we will also assess the sustainability plan's impact on citywide operational efficiencies, return on investment, and improved quality of life. Finally, I might just add that we will, and have actually already begun this process, of integrating the sustainability plan with all the other terrific work that is already going on here in Fayetteville, so that all of the departments that are already hard at work will be able to integrate that plan into their current operations quite simply and straightforwardly. So the sustainability plan should be designed to be locally attuned and very responsive to Fayetteville, while at the same time leveraging learning and best practices from other municipalities. So the action steps that wind up being part of the plan will bubble up from the community itself, from our various engagement efforts. They will come from your city staff, with whom we've already been in contact earlier today, and will continue that dialogue moving forward. And then we'll also draw in some different initiatives, perhaps from like-minded cities and other municipalities in the state, region, and country. So I mentioned a framework, this is a sample framework that you see before you right now. A framework is really designed just to be some large buckets into which different programs, policies, and projects might fall. And so here you see a sampling of those: energy and built environment, transportation and mobility, green community, which might include parks and recreation and other aspects of the city's function, and then resource conservation, things like water, wastewater, waste disposal, recycling, et cetera. So this is a possible framework. We'll be working closely with a steering committee that has already been named and finalizing a framework for the plan itself. And to dive into a couple of specifics, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Anna.
Thank you, Rich, and good evening, everyone. To talk about timelines and milestones of the plan, the expected delivery of the plan is next year in February, and we usually break it down in several buckets. First of all, we're setting up baseline and gather information, which we're already doing: data analysis and forecasts, community outreach and engagement, and drafting goals and strategies, and essentially delivering the final plan. So to talk a little bit about our approach is, we heavily rely on developing clear communication lines and engagement strategies with your community. Go to the next step is, we complete the baseline assessment, as Rich already mentioned, and we're going to talk about it in detail, to set our goals and strategies, identifying goals and targets, and potential initiatives. To dive into community engagement, so essentially, what we've done so far is we established project groups, steering committee, and leadership team, who will be working with closely over the course of this project and getting feedback from. So our essential goals is to engage city staff and officials and community residents and businesses and stakeholders. Specifically, we want to focus on engaging communities that may have been underrepresented in the past or may not have been as actively participating in these kind of initiatives. Essentially, what we're going to do for that is we're going to conduct surveys, hold virtual events and symposiums, to try to engage as many people as possible to get the most diverse feedback we can get and integrate it into our plan. So community outreach and engagement step will serve for us as a way to set strategies and understand what will be most beneficial for the city and its residents. So next step is data collection analysis, which essentially involves understanding the baseline and building a greenhouse gas inventory. So this step will be an additional aspect of us building prioritization and the plan for the city on top of the community engagement and outreach findings. So essentially, what we will do is we will evaluate the city's energy consumption, transportation sector, waste, water, building efficiency, and other aspects to set the baseline and come up with scenarios for decarbonization, but also look at metrics such as cost-benefit analysis and prioritize those initiatives based on the benefits to the city in terms of cost or improved quality of life. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Rich.
One of our final steps is to take all the initiatives that we have gathered from you, from the community, from Fayetteville, from business owners, residents, city staff, and we will align them in what we call a prioritization matrix. You can see some of the potential, these are just example strategies here along the side, on the left-hand side of the grid there. And then we will look at, and again, these criteria that run across the top will also be determined by our interactions with you all. We'll rank all these different strategies into a prioritization plan and begin then with sort of choosing low-hanging fruit. These are things that everyone feels have a high impact, but perhaps a low cost, or are approved by some other metric, and we will rank the various strategies and the various aspects, programs, policies, projects, and then we will work to achieve those initially and foremost. Those will finally go into an overall finished plan that will be integrated with the rest of the city's planning and action steps, and that will be delivered to the city, as Anna mentioned, in approximately a year. We will be able to have lots of interactions with various members of the community and of the city during this year. As we develop that, we have a project team that is already set up and have been meeting with them bi-weekly. We have a steering committee that we met with earlier today, and we'll meet with about once a quarter to vet various things like the framework, the strategies itself, and also the draft plan, and so we'll look forward to engaging there. In terms of next steps, we're right in the middle of data collection, and so we're looking at collecting lots of data, baseline plans, what's happening right now in the City of Fayetteville, and then we'll be looking at the next step, which will be community engagement that's reaching out very broadly to your community, asking their opinions, seeking their values, sort of needs and wants, et cetera. So with that, I would love to open it up to any questions from the council.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, please go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. This is something that's been talked about for a while. I was pointing at, I can't think of her name, but this is something, what was her name? Schreger. She's been having these conversations with council, so, yes. So it was good to see you here today. I do have a question with the sustainability, like how far out are we looking?
In terms of sort of the plan's effectiveness or efficacy, yeah, into the future? I mean, part of that will depend on what winds up in the plan. So the reason I say that is there are some aspects of sort of life and operations here at Fayetteville that change very, very rapidly. I do a lot of work in the electricity sector, for example, and technology for electricity delivery, you know, certainly generation, even markets for electricity are changing so dramatically that a very long-range plan will have to be reevaluated. So aspects under that category might want to be revisited in, you know, five to seven years or something like that. But in terms of a shelf life, you know, it should be a living document, I think, and should be revisited. A lot of times, we see people do a new sustainability plan, perhaps once every five years, so that may be a ballpark, but some wait a little bit longer. As you've seen here in Fayetteville, it was a little while ago for revisiting, but yeah, hopefully that gives you a range.
It did, and thank you, because that was going to be my next question, as far as how often do you recommend that we update the study? Okay, okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other comments? Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have a question about your strategy and your approach. My first question is, is this designed for targeted areas or is this designed for the entire city? Because if you look at your community outreach and your engagement, you talked about city, then you talk about community, so where would you get that data from? A targeted area or data from the entire city?
Yeah, we'll get that data from the entire city, and this is a community-wide, so a little bit of maybe definition, you know, when we talk about city operations, we talk about the government and the, you know, the government operations, and then community, we talk about all the residents, all the businesses here in Fayetteville.
Got it. Next question.
Yeah.
Your prioritization sample, if you look at the bottom, you have increased pedestrian mobility by extending bikeable and walkable corridors near the center of the city. How did you come up with that idea? And what made Center City a priority?
In the particular case in which this one was developed, so this is just an example from a previous assessment, but that was a desire that they had to make the city more walkable and bikeable, specifically in the center of the city.
A desire who had?
A number of the community members had that. So that was something that bubbled up from stakeholder engagement with folks around the city, it came up from city staff, and yeah, I'm not sure, you know, it was sort of a fully-vetted strategy from another municipality.
And it got rated four out of a possible five?
And it got rated four out of a possible five.
Let's repeat that. Four out of a possible five. That is phenomenal. I think that's great, because I know where we were a while back, so.
Yeah, and again, these are not specific policies that are, you know, that we have sort of designed and brainstormed for Fayetteville. That's not the intent of this at all. These are merely examples from previous plans so that you can see how the process of prioritization works, that it's integrated and it's, you know, vetted through many conversations with you all and members of your community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go to Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move that we accept this report.
Can I get a second? Got a second from Councilmember Davis. Could I get everyone, any discussion? All right, I guess we can, we need to vote on that. Good vote. Thank you so much for all your hard work. And that, I'm waiting on one more. That is unanimous with those present. Council, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we will be back in five minutes. Thank you. All right, I'm calling meeting back to order. Do I have quorum here? All right, we will go to 8.02. The City of Fayetteville Resident Survey Overview.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Council. My name is Chris Lowry, the City Strategic and Performance Analytics Manager in the City Manager's Office. Today, we have ETC. They will be virtual, so they're going to present the results and the findings of the survey that was recently completed. I won't go into details. I'll let him handle some of the concerns and some of the positive momentum that the city is seeing. So I'll go and turn it over to Mr. Jason. He is the VP at ETC, and he will be doing our survey of results and findings for us.
Great, thanks, Chris. Good evening. My name is Jason Marado. I'm with ETC Institute, and we are a marketing research firm that specializes in conducting community surveys for local governments. And we just finished for the fifth time conducting a community survey for the city of Fayetteville. So today, I'm going to walk through the key findings from the survey. Just a little background about ETC Institute. We're based in the Kansas City area, but we're a national leader in providing market research for local governments. We've been doing this type of work for over 40 years, and in the last 10 years alone, we've conducted surveys in more than 1,000 communities across the country. So this is really the type of work that we specialize in. So there are several reasons to conduct a survey like this. One is to get an objective assessment of how satisfied Fayetteville residents are with major city services, and to determine what residents feel are the top priorities for the community. We're also able to measure trends and compare these results to your previous surveys, and we're able to compare your results with other communities across the country on a regional and international basis. So I mentioned this is the fifth community survey we've conducted for the city of Fayetteville. The most recent one was back in 2019, so it's been about four years since your last survey. This one was conducted over the winter of 2023, 2024. The survey was administered by a combination of mail and online to randomly selected residents throughout the city, and that mail-online combination is our standard methodology for these types of community surveys. We received 605 completed surveys. Our goal is to receive 600, so we accomplished that. And the results of these 605 surveys, at the 95% level of confidence, has a margin of error plus or minus 4%. Essentially, that means that if we conducted this survey the same way 100 times, 95 times, the results would be plus or minus 4% from what we're reporting. So even for a statistically valid survey, the results are never perfect, but the margin of error is small. And as we were administering the survey, we made sure that the demographics of survey respondents reflect the actual population of the city. So here, we have a map of the city of Fayetteville. The red dots are households that completed the survey, and we had a good distribution throughout the city. I mentioned that as we were administering the survey, we made sure that the demographics of survey respondents reflect the actual population of the city. This chart shows the number of years that survey respondents have lived in the city. So 41% of respondents have lived in Fayetteville for more than 30 years, but then 22% have lived in the city for 10 years or less, and everybody else somewhere in between. So we had a good mix of longtime residents as well as newer residents to the city. We had about a 50-50 split of male versus female respondents to the survey, which is good. That's about what we wanted, is about an even split. This chart shows the race and ethnicity of survey respondents. This very much reflects the actual population of the city of Fayetteville. And then we also asked for the household income of survey respondents, and this also very much matches, reflects the actual population of the city. We had 19% of respondents who had households, who annual income is over $100,000, but then 20% have a household income of under $30,000, and everybody else somewhere in between. So a good representation by different types of households. So first, we'll look at some general perceptions that residents have in the state of Fayetteville. We asked residents to rate their perceptions of the city in a number of different ways. The dark blue are ratings of very satisfied. The light blue is satisfied. The gray is neutral, and we interpret neutral as average or meeting expectations. It's a rating of a three on a five-point scale, so a neutral or rating of a three is not a bad rating. And then the pink are those who are either dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. So if you look at the top of this chart, the majority of respondents are satisfied with the overall quality of life in their neighborhood. The only areas that had higher levels, or maybe significant levels of dissatisfaction, were value received for city tax dollars and fees, and then affordable housing options in Fayetteville. And affordable housing has been a high priority, really on just about every survey we've conducted over the past couple of years. Especially over the past year, satisfaction ratings with affordable housing have really gone down nationwide. This was the very first question on the survey. Here, we asked residents to rate their satisfaction with major categories of city services. So here, we're asking residents to rate these areas at the big-picture departmental level. And then later on in the survey, we asked about some more specific areas within some of these categories. So overall, the positive ratings far outweigh the negative. If you look at the top of this chart, the highest-rated areas are fire protection and rescue services, solid waste services, parks and recreation, facilities and programs, and customer service from city employees. The only, there are only two areas that had more dissatisfied residents than satisfied, and that's just the overall maintenance of city streets and in code enforcement. We also broke the results out geographically. So for these next few charts, I'll show you again a map of the city, and we broke the results out by census block group. So these are small areas, and the results are not statistically valid at the census block level. But the purpose of these maps is really just to kind of show the range of satisfaction in different parts of the city. So this first map is for the overall quality of police protection. The areas in blue had higher levels of satisfaction. Overall, residents in those areas are satisfied with police services. The ratings in yellow aren't bad, but those are just more average ratings. This map shows the overall maintenance of city streets. The areas in orange are where there are lower levels of satisfaction. It's typical for this type of map, anytime we're showing city streets, to have some areas where residents are dissatisfied. So in any community, there's usually some orange on these types of maps. The areas in yellow are more average satisfaction ratings, and then the areas in blue are where residents are a little more satisfied. But again, the sample is really fairly small for each one of these census block groups. This map shows the results for the overall quality of public transportation. You can see throughout the city, for the most part, residents gave either average ratings or they're satisfied with public transportation. Couple areas in orange, but, but nothing in red. This map is for code, overall code enforcement. Just like streets, this is typically an area that's lower-rated in most communities. So it's not a surprise to see some orange on this map where residents are a little more dissatisfied in those areas. For the most part, the ratings are more kind of average. There's a lot of yellowish on this map. Few areas where residents are a little more satisfied. And this map is for the overall quality of parks and recreation, programs and facilities. You can see really throughout the city, for the most part, residents are satisfied with parks and recreation, programs and facilities. So we also compared these results to your previous survey. The most recent one was in 2019. Overall, the satisfaction ratings are a bit lower now than they were in 2019, but that's a trend we've seen all over the country, so that certainly is not a surprise. Now, having said that, on this chart, we're looking at the areas that have had some of the biggest increases in satisfactions since 2019, and also some of the areas with the biggest decreases since 2019. So the biggest increases since the 2019 survey are in efforts to prevent fires, resolving residents' issues and concerns, how well residents' issues were handled, and the time it took for residents' requests to be answered, and then enforcing fire codes. So a lot of the biggest increases in satisfaction since your last survey are related to customer service provided by city employees. The biggest decreases in satisfaction since your last survey in 2019 were the feeling of safety downtown, the ease of walking in the city, just cleanliness and appearance of meetings and road sides, the overall feeling of safety, and then efforts to prevent crime. So we also compared your results to other communities. On this chart, the green line are Fayetteville residents who are either very satisfied or satisfied. The blue line are the satisfaction ratings for residents throughout the Atlantic region. That includes the state of North Carolina as well as several surrounding states. And then the gray line are the satisfaction ratings for residents from all across the United States. And this data is based on a national survey that ETC Institute conducts with residents across the country on an annual basis. So I put blue arrows by the places where Fayetteville ranks significantly above both the regional and national average, red arrows where you rate below. And the places without arrows means your ratings are very, they're pretty much on par with other communities. So when it comes to fire protection, police, stormwater, public transit system, communication with the public, your ratings are similar to other communities. You do rate much higher than other cities when it comes to solid waste services, parks and recreation, programs and facilities, and then customer service that's provided by city employees. The only areas that are rated below other communities were city streets, and then enforcing codes and ordinances. So now, we'll look at the top priorities. We saw earlier how satisfied residents are with major categories of city services. As a follow-up question, we asked, which of these services are most important for the city council to prioritize over the next couple of years? And you can see the two areas that are the highest priorities are just the overall quality of police protection, and then maintenance of city streets. The third and fourth highest priorities were enforcing codes and ordinances, and then communication with the public. This leads to what we call the important satisfaction rating. And this analysis is based on two different types of data, which you've seen already. We first asked residents how satisfied they are with city services, and then we asked which services should be the highest priorities for city council to prioritize. So which are the most important? And the idea behind this is that those services that have a combination of low levels of satisfaction, but at the same time are the most important, should be the highest priorities to focus on. So the highest priorities are the overall maintenance of city streets, overall quality of police protection, enforcing codes and ordinances, and then communication with the public. So we have a couple of other findings to take a look at. We saw that overall, residents are satisfied with customer service provided by city employees. For those who have interacted with city employees, we asked about some specific aspects of those interactions, and you can see the results are very positive. Over 70% of respondents are satisfied with the courteousness of city employees. Only 10% were dissatisfied. The majority of respondents were also satisfied with the accuracy of the information and assistance they were given by city employees. Most felt the city was easy to contact. Most were also satisfied with the time it took for their request to be answered. Most felt that their issue or concern was resolved, and that their issue was well-handled. We also asked respondents how they get information about the city. So you can see the top two sources are the city's social media, and also the city's website. The other top sources were just the local television news, local newspaper, and then city-produced printed brochures, flyers, posters, postcards, and letters. So to summarize, we found that residents overall have a positive perception of the city. 64% of respondents are satisfied with the overall quality of life in their neighborhood. That's compared to only 16% who are dissatisfied. When we compared your results to other communities, one of the areas that stood out was customer service provided by city employees, where you're rated 17 percentage points above the U.S. average. And the top overall priorities were maintenance of city streets, quality of police protection, enforcing codes and ordinances, and then communication with the public. So that is everything that I had. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. That was a great presentation, and thank you for all, everybody's hard work. I do have Councilmember Benavente that would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There were some heat maps that you included in your presentation that I did not find in what was made available to us. Is that something that you can share?
Yes, so there's a main report that doesn't have the maps. It has the charts and graphs, executive summary, a lot of the other information that I showed. But then, as a separate appendix, we sent those maps. It's a large file, so it's, we set it as its own separate appendix rather than incorporated into the main report.
Thank you. That might be for our staff, then, if we can get a copy of that appendix in that case.
Yeah.
You worked with other cities other than Fayetteville. Do some of those other cities include public safety infrastructures beyond just the police?
Do they, do they offer those services, meaning?
That's right. And the reason I ask is because the questions that you included related to public safety, you know, really only referenced the police. And I know presently, we don't necessarily have any other services we provide in that realm. We're working towards it, but I'm just asking for other cities you might work with, do they include a more comprehensive questionnaire as it relates to public safety, not simply equating police and public safety as the same thing?
It varies a lot. Now, there was a question on the survey that asked about some more specific aspects of public safety. I was really focused just kind of on the overall quality of police services, but we got more specific in the survey and asked about things like visibility of police in neighborhoods. We asked about fire department education programs. So we did get more specific at other parts in the survey.
Well, and the reason I ask is because, you know, when I have conversations with our community watches, which certainly are the same people that, you know, at some point might have interacted with the survey, there's issues in the neighborhood that they want resolved, and it's not necessarily the police department that needs to be the one to resolve it. They'd welcome anyone to come and address somebody struggling with addiction, someone struggling with mental health, someone struggling with poverty. But if the only option we give them is police to resolve that, then that's sort of the only frame of reference they have. I think when we give our citizens more options, they give a more nuanced response, which allows us as a city to now give a more nuanced solution. But in this survey, it looks like we really just asked from a very one-dimensional perspective on public safety. And I'm just curious, as we move forward as a city, as if we continue to work with y'all, do you guys have a way to ask more comprehensive questions as it relates to public safety, not solely filtered through the lens of a police department?
Yeah, we absolutely can do that.
If I can.
Yes, I'm City Manager.
Jason, let me try on that one. One of the first questions you asked, Councilmember Benavente, was about the heat maps. If it is the one that was shown in the presentation, Jason spent some time very briefly saying that it was not statistically valid, and it is only for representation, and we'll be happy to cover that with council. So in traditional heat map, you're looking at the level of intensity for something to show, but with each one of those census tracts, you would then have to come back and be able to calculate how many responded. So some census tracts may have had 50, some may have had 100, and so can't necessarily say that within each one of those census tracts that this was only for representation of the people who responded in the district. And he was, we actually covered this with him, and his statement that he made, that that map was not statistically valid. that map was not statistically valid was the disclaimer for that. But again, we can go into greater detail with that with council. Second point I would make is that, um, since I came to Fayetteville the first time in two thousand and four, we have done a number of citizen satisfaction surveys. And those surveys, um, generally, we ask the same type question, almost sometimes the same question, year to year, so that we can get comparative data. Uh, but it is on, on city services that we currently offer. And so when we begin to offer more services, I think that what you're saying, your request is, is that we would also have a survey that'd be representative of those services. If we're interested, if the council's interested in exploring what citizens' interests are outside of the current city services, Jason and others, another follow-up question would be, how can we delve into that deeper? And that would be a separate survey, that would be with focus groups, that would be with other traditional methods. But this citizen satisfaction survey is really for the citizen serp, the services that we currently offer, and it is also arrayed in such a way that it can provide comparative data to past surveys with the city, as well as other cities our size that ETC also does the surveys. So, but it is not meant to go to the level of detail and specificity for people to answer and give us feedback on the questions that you were referencing.
Right. A- and that's my concern, because it's sort of, it becomes a feedback loop, you know? If the only options are like Cold Stone, love it, like it, gotta have it. If those are the only three options that we're giving our citizens as it relates to public safety, well, of course.
It's, it's not.
Of course, they're gonna come to the same conclusions about, um, wanting more and more police, as if that's the only way to address these issues. So when we present the question that way, it begs a very specific answer.
Right.
And I know right now, we don't offer any other services like that. But when we get to that place, are we gonna be more comprehensive in our questions so it's not begging the same answer, so that it meets with the past five, you said two thousand and four? So twenty years worth of data that self, it fulfills its own prophecy, that of course the people are gonna keep asking for more of the same thing.
Well, I think that what the survey does show is that it, 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 it absolutely captures your interest. It captures your interest because the citizens that were there said they're interested in quality police and public safety services. That begs the question of what else council may wish to do to better understand what that means to citizens, which is what you've been advocating for.
It is.
So that is, so, so that this survey really captures the work that you and the other council members did at the retreat. You all told us, as one of the number one items, communication was an issue for you and your constituents. That was also one of the top five areas where the citizens said they want you to spend time. The mayor, if he was here, would be saying, "I told you so" on beautification. That also was one of the five areas that the citizens told us they want you to focus on, also on police and public safety services.
And that's why I wanna challenge right now, is that when I talk to my residents, they want these issues addressed. It's not specifically through police department. And so when the only option you give is more police to address the same problem, that's when we get, in my opinion, bad information back, bad data back, tired old data that might have been true twenty years ago, and we continue to sort of force it through one particular lens. When we've grown as a community, we've come to ask more nuanced questions about who is really best, um, to, to come to this domestic violence situation? Who's the best one to come to this mental health situation? But right now, we're still sort of forcing an answer into our public's sort of, um, understanding of what public safety could be in our community when we ask the same questions we've been asking for twenty years.
Those questions are for comparative state, and again, I would, would offer to you, the survey supports the exploration that you wish to do.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, Councilmember Benavente, are you done? All right, Councilmember Honduras.
Um, thank you, Mayor Protem. I think I found it. I was gonna ask Mr. Jason what the peer city comparison was, but I think, is that uh, what's on slide forty-nine, sir?
Um, well, what I was showing you today is based on a national survey that ETC Institute conducts annually with about ten thousand randomly selected residents across the country. Um, so it's a number of different cities. Um, the Atlantic region is those who live in the state of North Carolina, as well as surrounding, surrounding states, or the portion of that ten thousand.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Honduras. And, um, Councilmember Banks McLoughlin.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, thank you for the presentation. I do wanna take the time to thank the residents for participating, um, in the survey, because as a council, we do want the feedback so that we can be able to provide exceptional service, uh, for our community. Uh, my question is, um, for the survey, how were the residents, um, identified or vetted for this particular survey? That's my first question.
Sure. Households were selected completely at random to receive a survey. Uh, so the idea behind that is that every household in the city had an equal chance of being selected to receive a survey. Um, there's really two, two keys in order for results to be considered statistically valid. One is that households are selected at random to receive the survey, and then the second is that the demographics of survey respondents need to reflect the actual population of the city.
Okay, and then also, just to kind of piggyback off of, um, what Councilmember Benavente mentioned, 'cause that was one of the concerns I have as far as the recommendation. I know that, um, further along in the survey, it does have a comment section, but it also said that those, um, comments would be completely confidential. So I guess my question is, um, for us to be better in providing city services, um, how do we get that information so that we can be better?
We do have a report of open-ended comments. Um, it's just a list of, of all the open comments that were provided, um, and they cover, you know, a wide range of different, of different things. Um, I don't know if that answers your question, but we.
Okay, 'cause I looked, I didn't, I didn't see it. What page is that on, if you don't mind?
Um, it's a separate appendix from the main report, just like the G.I.S. Maxx.
But that was still more like in a graphs, but not actual comments?
Those are, those are just essentially verbatim comments. There's no graphs or data analysis on that. It's just kind of, here are open-ended comments that respondents provided.
Okay. Um, and that was, uh, what, well, I guess this would be for staff. So now that we have this survey, um, as far as the next step, as far as the action plan or taking a deeper dive?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Chrissy will need you as well. One of the things I was sharing just a moment ago about, and we spent some time with Jason talking about it, is that for the areas that, um, uh, were below where we think we wanna be, or even areas where we're much higher than we wanna be, where we thought we would be, um, we can actually develop action plans around each one of those. So the council had, uh, had said in your strategic planning session that you were, wanted more direction and more focus on communicating the city's positive story. Um, and what we looked at in the perception as well is that people said they felt unsafe in their city. Um, but as you recall, what the chief shared, um, at the, one of the last meetings was, is that crime was at a low, seven-year low, but the perception is still there. So that is exactly one of the areas, as I was sharing with Councilmember Benavente, that you have a disconnect between what the data is telling you about the safety of your city over the last seven years, as well as how citizens perceive it. And is that a communication issue, or is that some data gap somewhere? So for each one of those kind of aha moments that you have or we have, we're gonna be working with Chris and Andy and others in the departments to come up with plans to try to move that needle. We're back on schedule now, we hope, uh, funding, um, uh, from council being, um, uh, dependent on that, that we do a citizen survey, citizen satisfaction survey every two years. So over the next, um, eighteen months or so, before we gear up to do another citizen survey, we're gonna put those action plans in place to see if we can't move the needle from citizens' perception on those things. In the off year, we also then do an employee survey, and we'll be bringing you hopefully the employee survey, um, sometime next year this time. But that's how we're planning to do it. But if there are any aha moments or questions that you have about the data, if you could let us know that, and then that will also help inform our strategies to go out and do a deeper dive with the residents, or to try to talk to Jason to see if there's some more information we can glean from the data we've collected.
One more question. This same survey, was this the one on our website where they can use their phone? Was that the same? Okay, thank you.
Now, I will tell you, just, Jason and Chris, make sure I say this correctly. Um, to be statistically valid, though, we only use the mail-in respondents who were, um, randomly picked, people who self-select themselves to participate in a survey. We, if there were open-ended questions or something, we've collected that so people could participate, and we probably have coded that as well. But the responses that you see here that have been presented are statistically valid so that, 'cause typically, as you know, if you leave a comment card at a restaurant, you either love the service or you hate the service. And so what you really want is you wanna get people who don't, who wanna help you grow your city by participating when asked. And so, uh, but again, Jason and Chris, if I've misstated any of that, please correct.
You're correct, sir. So we, we did mail out the surveys. Um, within the survey, there was a link that you could actually go to to take the survey, and it was based on those addresses. So those a- addresses were randomly selected to be statistically, um, valid in that. So the other surveys, we do have the responses, um, that we can look at and, and just glean information from them, um, but for the statistical reference here was those, uh, specified addresses that was randomized.
Too, 'cause that was people willingly volunteering to fill out those surveys.
And I would say the, the information we have from them are the raw data, um, whereas this year, ETC actually did some analysis on that, but we do have some raw data that we can actually glean information from.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I just have a few, um, comments that I would like to make, and then we will move on. Um, number one, thank you very much for the presentation. And of course, my iPad just went dead, so can we pull up fifty-six? Do you have it?
See if Jason has that connection on his.
It's all right. I got it. Okay. So what I just wanted to reiterate to the listening audience, um, are fire protection and rescue services, eighty-six percent satisf, um, satisfaction. Um, qual, solid waste services, um, ten years ago, I think that would have been, satisfaction would have been five percent. We've moved up to seventy percent, especially out in the West. Um, customer service for city employees, fifty-six percent. Parks and recreation, sixty-two percent. Public transit, thirty-eight percent. We know we need to put some work into that. We know that we are trying to go countywide. We, we understand that. Stormwater, forty-eight percent. Personally, I'm surprised it was that high. But the five that we have to, that are most important, I should say the four, that are most important to our residents, is city streets, quality of police protection, enforcement of codes and ordinance, and effectiveness on communication with the public. And first of all, I'd like to congratulate the staff. Seventeen percent above the na- national average is something to celebrate, and thank you for everything that you do for us. We have come a long way, and I can tell you, sitting in this chair as long as I have, it is a lot easier and more efficient than it has ever been, so thank you for that. And the other thing is, is our residents are telling us that they want to live in a safe environment, and they don't wanna look at trash every day, and they want us to be liv, they want Fayetteville to be a great place to live, a beautified place to live with communication. So again, thank you, and I'm gonna close it out with that. And do I have a motion to accept the report? I'm sorry, Benav, Mr. Benavente.
I was gonna make a motion to accept the report.
Okay, can I get a second? I've got a second with Councilmember Banks McLoughlin. All those in favor? I have two people. One more? Oh, all right, that is eight, um, for those, eight to zero for those who are present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, council.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, we're gonna go to the public forum. The public forum shall be held on the second Monday, it will be Thursday this time, of every month during the regularly scheduled meeting of the council, and shall be the first item of business after the approval of agenda. The public forum shall last no longer than thirty minutes. Any remaining speakers on the public forum list that do not get the opportunity to address the city council will have the option to have their name placed at the beginning of the next scheduled public forum list of speakers. That will not happen tonight. We have three speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Archie Behringer. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. I come before you again tonight regarding my concerns centering around the slogans around the market house. It has been called to my attention that plans are being made for a makeover and the slogans to be removed. As this will probably be my fourth and final time to trumpet this cause, I certainly want to take this opportunity to commend both the mayor and council members for the remarkable job that I feel like you have done in your planning, and also for the progress that has been made. I believe that the market house belongs to all of us, along with the history that it represents, the good, the bad, and the ugly. I'll admit, it has been a touchy subject for me and thousands more that call Fayetteville home. And any that may have been offended, I can only say that I ask for your forgiveness and understanding, as I can truthfully say that I've had the best interest of all people at heart, red, yellow, black, and white. My words and actions have been merely born of frustration, but then again, to err is human, but to forgive is divine. And I would also like to say in closing, that from henceforth, may the market house not be viewed as a symbol of slavery, but as a shrine for freedom for all people in the peace and harmony of God that he has intended for all mankind. And I believe in my heart of hearts that this will beautifully tie in with, for liberty, and also will honor and enhance our name as truly the all-American city that we are. Saint Francis has said in his prayer, "Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let there be love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; where there is sadness, joy. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life." May God bless each and every one of you, members of the city council, citizens of Fayetteville, may God bless Fayetteville, and may God bless the United States of America. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Behringer.
Our next speaker is Mr. William Bryant. Mr. William Bryant? Not here. Our next speaker is Mr. Chilenko Hurst. Mr. Chilenko Hurst? Not here. Mayor Protem, we have no further speakers.
Thank you, Ms. McGill. All right, we will go to ten point zero one, Presentation of Appointments Committee, Recommendations for Boards and Commissions Appointments. I will go to Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As Chair of the Appointments Committee, I will read our nominees for the Boards and Commissions. Before I move forward, our committee members are Councilmember Honduras, Mayor Protem, Jensen, Councilmember Thompson. Who did I leave off? Yes, and the mayor, which is a part of every committee. I have also asked that our clerk, Mrs. Pam McGill, to assist if for some reason I do not say a name correctly. I am known for, well, let us first begin with our airports commission. The committee has nominated along with the The committee has nominated, along with the airport director of his request, Ms. Judy Dawkins, Stephen Harper, and Robert Hamley. Okay, I did good at that. Okay, for our audits committee, Dr. M. Fob Akpan. And we still have one vacancy there. Before I go any forward, is, Ms. Attorney, is that the item that you and I were emailing each other about, or was it the Ethics Commission about the CPA?
I was talking about the Ethics Commission. You were talking about the Audit Committee?
No, no. Whichever, whichever one that had the CPA on it.
It's the Ethics Commission.
Okay, then I'll speak on that when I get there. Our Community Police Advisory Board, our nominees are Pablo Araho, let Ms. McGill help me, please. I don't want so many names coming from left and right.
I believe it's Araho.
Okay, that'll be good. Jeremy Feebig, Treasure Hypheny, Angela Heisen, Dr. Gregory Perkins, and George Watson III. Our Economic Development Board is Mr. Carl Manning. Our Ethics Commission has two, had two vacancies. One vacancy on the Ethics Commission required a CPA as a part of the accreditation for them to be a part of the board, and that is something that we are working on now with the attorney for our Boards and Commissions, and along with our city attorney. So the one name that we have for our Ethics Commission is Diamond Spain. As we move to our Fayetteville Advisory Committee, Austin Campbell, Michael Counsel, April Thatchell, James Elliott. For our Fair Housing Board, Carol Echavari, Deborah Kinzer, and we have one vacancy for that board still. For our Fayetteville Next Commission, Matthew Downing III, Roxy Elpenker, Sharon Ford, Alicia Gerald, Kendra Jackson, Maury Moat, and Brittany Patterson. For our Historical Resource Commission, Michael Pennix and Robert Tiffany III. For our Human Relations Commission, Mr. Eric Bradley, Shirley Francis, and Dakota Wright. For our Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Lynn Guzman, Thomas Hatch, Charles Hill, Amanda Mitchell, and Crystal Moore Williams. For our Public Arts Commission, Laura Falls and Coley Strader. For our Redevelopment Commission, Sheila Fason and Dana Lee Gladdy. For our Senior Citizen Advisory Board, Darlene Fair, Laura Musler, Roger Rose, Van Shonron, and June Vincent. For our Storm Water Advisory Board, Corinne Keys. Last, our Woodpeckers Board, Austin Campbell, Matt Simmons, Roy Dowling, and Michelle Skinner. Mayor Protem and my fellow councilmembers, these are the recommendations for our Boards and Commissions. Please know, council, that we thoroughly vet these folk, we go through these folk with a, with a fine-tooth comb. It's not easy. It's a very, very long process, and I would like to make a motion that we accept our slate that I had just announced for our Boards and Commissions.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Hare, and I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, I had a motion already with a second from Councilmember Honduras. So do we have any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. As I was looking at the dates, what is the term? Because I'm seeing some for two years, and I'm seeing some that's listed for five years. Is that a typo?
Ms., Ms., our clerk, she can answer that better, because it does vary.
Some boards have different term limits, and some of them could be partial appointments where they're finishing up.
Is there a certain board that you're in question?
No, I just didn't realize that we had some boards that was only two years, then some three, then some five-years terms.
They vary all the way through.
City manager, you have your light on?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor Protem, and it's an excellent question, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. When you look at the list, one that does stand out is the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission, and their terms are five years. And some of the others, as you all have alluded to, are two-year terms, and some of them will fill in, but that was one that did draw, may have drawn your attention. I know it also did on Councilmember Honduras as well, but I just pulled it up and took a look.
Is there a reasoning behind the different years depending on what board it is?
I think it, I'm not sure specifically if there is a federal requirement that, for the Redevelopment Commission, to say assist us with CBPG funds, but probably, again, just using that as an example, I pulled it up, the city clerk maintains a really good website that has the descriptions of the boards, but it actually, this one actually looks like it was, has a charter based upon the state, state law, 168-508. So I think that's probably it, just how they were originally chartered.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was a typo, but I do want to thank every resident that's volunteering their services, serve on these boards. Also, last question, for the vacant position, I think I saw three of them are still open until we find someone?
Yes, yes, they're still open. And one thing that I want council to know that we have instilled within this committee, for one thing, we, we had requested that staff go back and reiterate to those that time that has expired, if they wanted to, you know, to reapply, because a lot of the members sometimes didn't even know that their time had, it was coming close. So we, that's one thing that we've done. And if we have some names that were not applied to a board, and we still have some vacancies, then staff now goes back and make phone calls to those that did not make a board and ask them if they would be interested in fulfilling some of the vacant slots. So we got a pretty good system going on, and those vacancies won't stay vacant for long.
All right, can I call for a vote?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I'm sorry. Councilmember Green?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, this is probably a question for you. Could you verify the names on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board? Did it change from the time we first got our agenda to tonight? Because I have a name that's different from the one I printed out.
I think you're referring to Laura Musler.
Yes.
Yes. That was one of the ones that Councilmember Hare was just referring to, that she had not requested that.
I just wanted to verify. Okay. Just wanted to verify. Thank you.
Okay, we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, I ask for your vote. All right, that is unanimous for those who are present.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, great job, Boards and Commissions. All right, we will go to 10.02. I will go to Councilmember McNair.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would like to move that we authorize the request for legal representation and petition the court for disclosure of the body cam footage.
Could I get a second? I got a second from Councilmember Green. Okay, any discussion?
Well, yeah, just also let them know which item that it was, because we pulled the item, so we know where that's being applied.
So that item was 7.03, and at the beginning of the meeting, we moved it down to 10.02.
Just wanted it to be in the record. Thank you, all is well.
All right, can I ask for your vote?
Good job, council.
All right, that is unanimous with those that are present. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Thank you, council, great meeting.